Cut.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? At this time, I'd like to introduce Marty Duffy, Lackawanna County's Assistant Officer's Office. Disabled Air Force veteran, served for 1970, 1971 in Vietnam, rising to rank as Sergeant. Marty served as an aircraft mechanic and earned numerous awards throughout his military career, including the Vietnam Service Medal, Good Conduct Medal, and Vietnam Conflict Medal. He is now employed in Lackawanna County Assistant Officer's Office. Thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, could we have a moment of silence? This past week, we lost four citizens in Syria. Sharon M. Kent, from upstate New York, Navy Chief. Her new was a sense of translations of messages. Scott Wertz, Defense Intelligence, former veteran Navy SEAL. Army Chief, warrant officer. Two, Jonathan Palmer, Jonathan was Special Forces. And Gadir Tahar, Intelligence Officer for the Army. They were killed by a suicide bomber in Syria. Please keep our heroes and their families and our thoughts and prayers. You know, they're the ones that are fighting for our freedoms every day. Please keep them your thoughts and prayers. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to bring this January 23rd, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue, at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Real call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Proclamation presentation. Jack Finerty Day. Is Jack here today? Jack, would you like to come up to the podium? Jack, we're happy to have you here. Tell us about the adventure. It starts back in, geez, you were at Central High School, basically, you didn't move too far, right across the street from the library.
I haven't moved far at all.
Yeah.
For 56 years, I haven't moved far. Yeah, actually, I was in guidance class, all right, on Friday afternoon. Mrs. Akerly, some of you may know that name, and if you've met her, you'll know that name. So she announced that the Scranton Public Library was looking for a boy, all right, that tells you how things have changed, you can't say that anymore. They were looking for a boy to refile periodicals two hours a day after school, all right. Three of us went over, were interviewed by Dorothy Hopkins, wonderful woman. I never knew whether I was her first choice or her last choice, but it was my phone that rang. So by the time I got home, we were having dinner at Lloyd Street, Lloyd Street Address, phone rings and Mrs. Hopkins tells me be there tomorrow morning at 8:30. And that's been it. I can't stress enough, I mean, the blessing that I feel that was, you know. Of course, they had no idea at the time that it was going to define my life in such significant ways, but the life has a way of happening, all right? And I'm not a planner to begin with. It's been wonderful, and I mean, the library allowed me to basically structure my schedule in such a way that I could get my bachelor's at the University of Scranton in education, and then continue on and get a master's in library science at Marywood University. Did a bunch of different jobs down there, loved every one of them. Reluctantly became director in 1986. Really wasn't ambitious for that job, but very glad I got it in the end.
Yes.
Very glad, yeah. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the Commissioners, to thank you all, and to thank past Boards of Commissioners, who have been so supportive of the libraries. And that shows. I mean, Lackawanna County is a model for library service across Pennsylvania, and my sincere thanks to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, you know, the citizens actually voted for that additional tax, so it's their credit that they get that. We just follow through with what they want on their votes, but the work that you're doing is tremendous, so I appreciate it, and, you know, very proud to have you here and representing a great service to our community. Thank you very much, and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to keep that boy in our sentences in the future, but we'll see. But I agree with you, it's kind of difficult these days. But I do like the educational programs that you're offering now, especially with script writing. They came in last time and they were talking about that, so thank you for that additional service as well, if you're providing that in your section. And I look forward to you continuing your service in the community throughout your life. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Very good.
Again, it has been a pleasure.
Commissioner Notaryani?
Jack, you're a driving force in helping the library grow, with the help of a lot of people, but you've done a great job. We know each other a long time, and it's always a pleasure. And I hate to see you go, but I'm sure you'll figure something else out to do, and you're not ready to retire yet, Jack.
Could be politics, I don't know.
Yeah, man. There you go.
There you go, Jack.
Oh, there you go. Was that an announcement?
Keep up the good work.
My running mate will be.
Keep your options open, right?
There you go.
Actually, I view my status as transitioning from library director to library patron. I intend to make weekly visits down there and catch up on all the books that I thought I was going to read over the years and didn't get there.
You've seen changes. My god, card catalog, there's so much different. There's CDs, there's computers, the library is, as much as it was a library in the past, it's a library slash community center now. People come in to do their resumes, utilize computerization, get movies, there's just so many different functions that go on. You've seen the library have a second floor that never was ADA accessible, to an elevator opening up one day, and I think it was Keith Williams who rolled his wheelchair onto the second floor, first time ever in the history of the library being there. And the library is really neat, because it's not some, a lot of things, maybe just a big old mansion, that was built purely to be a library, am I right, Jack? That's what it was.
By somebody who at that point was a lifelong resident of Buffalo. It was his gift to the city. He spent $125,000, which in 1891 was a king's ransom, all right?
I would have loved to build my house for 125, that type of house.
Particularly that house, right? But yeah, he had a great love for the people of Scranton, and he had a great belief in the ability of public libraries in particular to provide education to those who perhaps could not afford to go to college.
Yeah. But I would just like to thank you for your years of being there, and, like you said, everything that's happened, you know, I mean, you've grown and molded yourself with the times, you know, I mean, like I said, the library's changed from the 1960s up into 2019, and from everything else, like from ECTV starting off with the library system to everything that you have going on today. I mean, you are the cornerstone, you're the person that people look to, the events that you have there on the street. It's just amazing, that it's just, it's so embedded in downtown Scranton and Lackawanna County, that people that, I mean, when they think of the cornerstones of libraries, they think of your library first. And it's the most, anyone, and I'm sure that everyone in this audience has seen the library, but if you hadn't, just take a walk through, just to get a feel for how beautiful the facility is, you know, I mean, the architecture, the woodwork, just everything, the windows, you know, I mean, you don't see this type of thing, like, and it was built for 125,000, that number just amazes me.
I'll give you another one to amaze you, Commissioner. He thought he could do it for 55.
Wow.
So he had a huge cost overrun. And, I mean, you folks are no strangers to building projects.
Yeah.
So his issue, I'm sure, was the same. The architects came to him, and the architect was from Buffalo too, by the way, all right? He brought his own architect down to do this. The architects would come to him with change orders and...
Seventy grand, that's a lot of change orders.
That's a lot of money, yes, and change orders. But he would not compromise on the quality of that building, because he wanted the building to be equal in terms of aesthetics and functionality to its mission. And its mission was for the elevation of all classes of people, and it has done that. Public libraries change lives.
And those, in that area out there, you have Central, you have the library, you have the Masonic Temple, you have the Administration Building, like, I mean, those buildings are just, I mean, you don't see anything like that anywhere else. I mean, that library's second to none. But we'd like to thank you for your 56 years and what you've given to the people of Lackawanna County. Thank you, Jack, and thank you for being my friend and being friends of so many people in Lackawanna County through the years.
I'm honored. Thank you.
We're honored to have you here. Your proclamation, "Jack Finerty, dedicated employee to the Albright Memorial Library is retiring after 56 years of service to the Scranton Public Library System, whereas a lifelong city resident, Jack is a graduate of Central High School," which is only about 50 feet away from the school, from the library, "and the University of Scranton, "entered a master's degree in library science from Marywood College. He started working at the Memorial Library as a reference page on high school in 1962 and never left. Jack progressed through various positions, including working at the reference desk and overseeing the film department, whereas in 1986, Mr. Finerty became Executive Director of the Scranton Public Library System." Great job, Jack, which includes Albright, which includes the Albright Buildings, the Lackawanna County Children's Library, the Nancy K. Holmbrunch, the Library Express Bookstore, a Bookmobile, the Silk Mill House, the Site of Libraries Technical Services. Whereas Jack's tenure involved overseeing the library moved to automation, including the usage of computers, technology, and the Internet, as well as directing major renovations and improvements to the historical site. He will forever be remembered as a wealth of historical knowledge, a mentor, and a tireless promoter of the library system. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry Notaryani, Lauren A. Cummings, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim and acknowledge January 23rd, 2019, a behalf of our 214,000 citizens as Jack Finerty Day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations, Jack.
Thank you.
Congratulations, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Where would you like it? Congratulations, Jack. Thrilled to have you here.
Thrilled to be here.
Little more, little more, little more.
Right there?
That's good, right there. Everybody look here and smile, one, two, can take a couple. There we go, one, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Congratulations.
I love this area and I want to see it prosper.
I'm saying I'm going to retirement, but I won't be retired.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that just proves a point, that if you love what you do, it isn't work. Jack, thank you very much for coming in. Commissioner Cummings, 19-0026.
We have a small business spotlight, Dave's Market from Moscow. Hi, how are you?
Well, thank you, how you doing?
Good, good, thanks for coming in, tell us your name and what you do.
My name is David Martin. I own a small deli market cafe slash grocery store over in Moscow, Pennsylvania. It's really been bringing a lot of specialty items to the area. We started our own pierogi line, our own blends line, we started wholesaling those as well, and wholesaling our juices to gyms and yoga studios in the area, doing cold-pressed juices. We've been trying to offer something that Moscow's never really had, which was a lot of specialty items, but also more health-conscious type choices, which where the juices really kind of come into play, especially with the gyms and the yoga studios and whatnot. We've really been trying to offer something in the area that hasn't been there for quite some time, which was just another option without having to run all the way to Wegmans or run all the way to, you know, Dixon City or Scranton or anything like that. But we really enjoy the clientele out in Moscow. I've lived out there now for about six years. I first started off over in Scranton, I lived in the Brooks Building downtown for about three years, and we love Scranton, you know, we love being a part of the downtown area themes that they had going on, the movie nights, all the different activities that they had for the community, and that's something that we look to bring to Moscow. We actually built a small little stage so that during the summer months, we can do open-mic nights and do more outdoor activities with our courtyard seating. And so that's been something that we've really been trying to gravitate towards, is offering something that was family-friendly for the community to actually get out and do. So we do have inside seating in the store, and we also have outside seating during the, like I said, during the warmer months. But that was more or less what we were setting out to do whenever we opened up. We wanted to offer something that wasn't there and hadn't been there for quite some time. But that's kind of where we were gravitating towards whenever we first opened up, and the store continually changes, you know, we, when we first opened up, it was going to be a discount grocery store. And then whenever we got going and we really saw the vision of what we were going to do, we started, you know, opening up a deli, buying a hot buffet, you know, putting more inside seating, and then we started, you know, just doing more specialty items, like we do stuffed cabbage, we do halushki, or cabbage and noodles, you know. Our area is really predominantly Polish, it's, you know, which is a very different thing for me, because when I lived in Scranton, it was, everything was Italian, everything was pizza, everything was, and I love pizza and I love Italian food, but I can't eat bread 24/7, so I had to give some other options out there. And the Polish community is definitely something that we kind of locked into. But we started doing hot sandwiches and, you know, with our deli, that's been one of the biggest things, is been doing catering for like the school board meetings, we do catering, we've been doing catering for funerals, parties, and we just kind of have been going from there. And the store kind of continues to transcend and grow with the community, as I get a better idea of what the community actually wants. And one of my, you know, I have a lot of friends that own grocery stores, and they told me, they said, "Just wait, the store is going to change, it's not going to be what you thought it was going to be. It's going to grow with the community, it's going to, you know, it's going to adapt to what they actually want." And that's something I had to kind of be okay with, as far as what my vision was as to what the community actually wanted. So every day, we're always listening to the community, you know, I think for the first six months, we were, every day we were asking somebody, "If you don't see something you like in the store, let us know, it's something that we can look into stocking." Because I wanted it to be Moscow store, and that's why we work with a lot of local farmers and our local vendors. We have local grass-fed and butchered beef, local free-range chicken eggs, local milk, eggs, cheese, and different things like that, that we have sourced from local people. And that's been one of the biggest things, is not just doing what we want to do, but doing something that includes Moscow. And, you know, it's like anywhere, if you're not from there, you're always going to be an outsider. So one thing that I said from day one is I want to have Moscow inside Moscow. And that was one of the biggest things that we really started doing, was really including local people, because, you know, when everybody walks in the store, they say, "Hey, I know that farmer, hey, I know this person." And it's not just me, someone that's been living here for six years, I'm not, you know, I'm no longer an outsider at that point. Then it's more of an inclusion and part of the community. But like I said, the school board has been very welcoming, they've been great, they've been helping promote the store. The Villager ran a great piece on the store, and they, you know, they did a tremendous job of capturing what we were wanting to do, and, you know, where our vision was kind of headed.
Sounds great, how long you open?
We've been open now for eight months. So it's just a baby.
Well, we look forward to watching you grow into what your community's looking for. Thank you so much for your initiative, and you just decided to do this one day, what made you decide?
I still have no clue what I want to do with my life. That's just kind of, I guess, my, I don't know if it's a irresponsibility or a childlike wonder, but, you know, I got out of my last business just due to, you know, money is always there, but you can't raise a family off of money alone, so I was tired of traveling nonstop and just being gone. So I got rid of that business, and my now-business partner, Lynn Gruber, she called me up one day, and I was not working for about a month or so, I didn't know what I was going to do. I wanted to take some time and actually kind of, you know, figure out, what can I do that I'm not going to be, you know, taking a massive amount of time away from my family? And so she said, "Let's start a grocery store," and I was like, "Okay, all right." So the next day, she drove in from Jersey, and she, we sat down at the table, and we started, you know, brainstorming of how we wanted the business to look and, you know, what we wanted to do. And so we started putting things together, we formed the LLC, and then it was off to the races. That was last January, actually, and it was about seven months of construction. The floors were dirt, the walls were exposed brick, there was no electrical, so this was a complete overhaul, so, and I'm OCD and picky to a T, so I knew that whenever this store was open, everybody kept telling me, "Just open, just open, just open," and I was like, "No." I was like, "I don't want people walking in here and assuming that just because I'm young, that the store is going to be a sham put together." I wanted it to be very professional, and I wanted people to be very comfortable when they're walking in, you know, whenever you're going to go and eat something, the last thing you want to be thinking about is, is the place clean, are they using, you know, proper utensils, is everything professional? You know, I wanted to walk in and feel like I was in Wegmans, but feel like I was in a small town.
Nice.
And, you know, I think the store that we put together is the best representation of how we felt about Moscow. You know, I feel that Moscow is often overlooked, but I know a lot of the business owners that live out there and have businesses inside of Scranton, and, you know, I think the lack of people wanting to really push into a small town is kind of what keeps people from opening smaller businesses in a small town. But I understand that, this is one thing I've understood more than anything else, if you have something good, people will travel for it. And I've had people traveling from Wilkes-Barre, I've had people traveling from New Jersey, I've had people traveling from Kingston, Pittston, Scranton, I've had somebody come in from Binghamton, New York before, because they heard from somebody else that our food was phenomenal, and so they just made a day of it. They come down, they relax, they enjoyed our food, they enjoyed the environment, and that's really what we were focusing on, the customer service is key, it's crucial, and that's what I've really instilled with anybody that comes to work at the store. I let them know, "If you are not better off, whenever you leave here, for whatever reason, then I have not done my job. If you are not better, if you are not more responsible, and if you're not more polite and have a better customer service, then I have not done my job." And that's my job, is to make sure that I'm instilling in anybody that works for the store as an employee, that they are treating everybody with care and treating everybody with utmost respect.
Well, it sounds like you took an initiative and ran with it, and that's basically why we do this, and we recognize businesses to show, you know, our community, to portray you and show them what you were capable of, and that they can do the same if they wish to. And we just want everybody to make sure that they're, you know, looking to you for inspiration.
I appreciate that.
And you are an inspiration for what you've done. So thank you for having the courage to open a small business in Lackawanna County, and I wish you continued success.
And I'd like to thank the Board as well. I do appreciate you inviting me here, it's a great opportunity, it's a great opportunity for the store, and we do appreciate it.
Congratulations. Commissioner Notaryani?
It's kind of amazing in that it's not something you were driven to, you had to be kind of convinced, this is what we'll do, you have that advice. And your business plan of having it complete and right before you start it is a perfect way of doing things. You only get one chance to make a first impression.
That's right.
And you'll obviously have done that. Moscow's a great community, and it's someplace where I'm sure you'll be able to grow, and thank you very much for working in Lackawanna County and opening the store, and I'm sure it'll work out very well for you, you've got the right attitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Dave, read about you in the Moscow Villager, I think you were on the front page, I think it was back in, what was that, December?
I believe so, December or November.
November, okay. And I was thinking, wow, I mean, this small store opens up up in Moscow, how did you get to Moscow? How did that happen?
Well, I, we were living downtown, and we were looking for a house forever, you know, we looked in Montage, we looked in Clarkstown, we looked in Dalton, we looked everywhere. And, you know, and we looked in Scranton as well, it wasn't just, you know, in those areas, but, you know, we were looking for something that was, you know, I'm originally from Texas, and everything in Texas is a suburb. Everybody has sidewalks, everybody has, you know, ample room between you and your neighbor, and...
Lots of space.
Yeah, absolutely. And so whenever we widened our search, Moscow came up, and there was, you know, an old neighborhood tucked away over there, and it had sidewalks, and it was beautiful, and I was like, "Okay, well, let's go look over here." And so we went out and we looked at a home that was, we thought was available, it was no longer available, and our realtor said, "Well, hey, my old boss said he might be interested in selling his home sometime soon." She was like, "Let me talk with him and we'll see if we can, you know, put something together." And so, two weeks later, we were living in that house. It was that quick, you know, whenever we, and we looked everywhere, but whenever we found somewhere that we actually liked, and I think the school district, you know, North Pocahontas School District is wonderful, they do a tremendous job out there as well, those were all big, key, crucial moments for my wife and I, because our son, you know, we had him going to a private school down in the valley for a little bit, and whenever we moved out there, I think that was one of the biggest things for us, the school district was on point, and so that was something that really gravitated us out there. But, you know, I've been all over the world, I've been all over the states, and I love that small town, it's absolutely wonderful. The people out there are just great, and they've really welcomed us into the community.
I'd like to introduce you to one of your neighbors, right behind you. Do you know your neighbor?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Did you go to get any of those good juices yet? Beautiful, beautiful. That's great. But congratulations, no, I think this is a great story, you know, I mean, you tell, this is in your heart, you really love it, and you got an array of different foods there, and you got talushki, and, you know, I mean, and you do it, it brings a blankie, that's really great.
Absolutely.
Like, that's the things that a lot of little stories in the area, they might not have that. And you're starting to cater outside there, you're doing some work with the school district, because they have monthly meetings and work sessions, that's great.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, you're expanding and you're growing with the community, you're molding with what you have around you.
Yes, sir.
But no, this is fabulous, and I'd just like to congratulate you, I mean, you built a house up there, now the house came, was the house first or was the business first?
The house was first, this was, I've had a, this was a couple businesses ago.
Oh, okay, so you've been up there for a little while.
Yeah, I've been up there for...
So you like the area?
I love the area, I've been out there for six years, and it's, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. Regardless of what I do in life, this is where, that's where I'm going to consider home.
What grade you childhooded?
I was in first grade.
First grade?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that is a, that is a great district there.
It really is.
Like I said, I'm just like looking through that you're, my god, there's so many different things that you have there. We got, you got Asian, Kosher, Russian, Romanian, Polish, Indian, Italian, gluten-free foods, yeah, that's a big thing today, my god. But Dave, congratulations, we're so happy to have you here. Website, page?
Facebook is going right now, go on there, you can like us, you can also see our daily specials, we're constantly updating on there, our Instagram is also listed on there as well, and our website, I'm kind of in the process of redoing right now, so that one is under construction, but that's, we're gravitating towards really setting up everything for also having delivery as well, because that's one of the things that, you know, Moscow truly needs, primarily because of the elderly population that's in the area. So we're starting up with that, actually launching, this coming tomorrow, actually, is when that's starting. So people can actually get groceries and hot food delivered to their house.
That's great, especially with the cold weather and stuff, people don't want to go out.
Absolutely.
Phone number and address.
Phone number is 570-877-2475, and the address is 100 South Main Street, Moscow, Pennsylvania, 18444.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings has a certificate for you.
A certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Dave's Market. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Dave's market in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County given this 23rd day of January 2019 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Nutariani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up, Dave. Congratulations, congratulations.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, wow, really?
You got Moscow tea biscuits. Sorry, I tower over everybody.
It's alright.
Come hop in here.
Should I move the basket all the way for a second?
No, the basket's in good shape.
Tell me when I was tall.
You're not, but we're alright. Take one with a flash. Thank you, very good.
Thank you very much. Absolutely, pleasure. Thank you very much.
Well, there, that goes to show you that all you have to do is come up with a plan and you can make it, you can execute and make it happen. Dave, congratulations, good luck with the store. Um, real quick before we go into the opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only, I'd like to, uh, thank Dave Hahn for emergency services. You know, we had our snowstorm this weekend, they didn't have any issues, but they were ready if any issues did come up. And, uh, roads and bridges, Larry Lacosik and their staff and, uh, emergency services staff for being on hand and making sure that if any issues came up, they bring more people in, they're prepared for anything that comes up. So, thank you, Dave, thank you for everything you guys do and thank you, Larry. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay.
Somebody has their hand raised.
How are you?
How are you? Good morning.
Pull your, pull the mic down, you'll be...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I want to hear your name and address and then you can go right from there.
My name is Denise Prowell. I live in Clark Summit, 614 Center Street. And I'm the Secretary of the Scranton Abingtons Planning Association. And, uh, I'm talking about that agenda item. Um, I attended every meeting of this group during the comprehensive planning and it was a lot of meetings with public input and, um, each community made its own part of the comprehensive plan. Uh, so I know what a great group of people this is and, uh, um, I, the goodwill uh, between the communities. And, uh, nine of the communities are going to implementation now, uh, an update of the zoning, of their zoning ordinances. The nine communities include Dunmore, Scranton, and seven of the Abingtons communities. And I want to thank the Commissioners, um, and Planning Director George Kelly for seeing the importance of this project. All of these nine municipalities are in need of an update of their zoning ordinances and have committed the funds, uh, for the project and it's a, um, far, far, um, uh, lower cost to the communities because of, it's a multi-municipal group, first of all. Again, each community will be in charge of its own zoning ordinances with public comment and there are also, um, the opportunities that they hadn't had, uh, before because it's a multi-municipal plan. And that's why there are so many of these kinds of planning groups across the state. Mary Liz Donato and Steve Petoniak have been a great guide in all of this. They're sitting back there, the county planning professionals, uh, with their great expertise in planning and zoning. So we thank them for that. In Pennsylvania, when a community is not in a multi-municipal plan, they have to go by the Pennsylvania law that states that each and every municipality, whether it's rural or urban, has to allow enough land for each and every land use. And that had turned out to be, um, quite impractical and, and detrimental in some, in some respects. And over the years, that has, uh, contributed to abandonment of existing urban areas and downtowns and abandonment of older industrial areas. And there are varying degrees of this. Um, another problem that it was, uh, contributing to was the rural areas, uh, were being forced to become urbanized and, uh, forced really to compete with the existing urban areas, even in cases where the rural area, the people of that area wanted to remain essentially rural or have their rural, rural character. And what a multi-municipal plan does, the state legislature began allowing this in the year 2000. Um, and it's the only tool in Pennsylvania that does this. When communities voluntarily create a multi-municipal comprehensive plan, it allows there to be areas targeted for growth, not growth as an expansion of, of land area within those areas, but growth through revitalization. And our plan does a lot of that. And, um, what a multi-municipal plan does is it allows areas, um, existing urban areas to be targeted for growth. And when I say growth, it doesn't have to be growth as an expansion of that land area. It can be growth through revitalization of those areas. Pardon me? Yes, to, to, um, revitalize those areas, make sure they're at their highest use. Um, in the case of a downtown, for, for it to be thriving and for people to be living there, for the businesses to be, to be open. And the, our plan does a lot of that and it's been great that we have urban and rural communities working together because there are rural areas in our plan that wish to keep their rural character. So the growth areas, the targeted growth areas in this plan are existing commercial areas and downtowns, any of the communities that have them. Um, many areas in Scranton are targeted, not just the main downtown, but a lot of, uh, a lot of different neighborhoods have areas that are targeted. Uh, the city planner has been very involved in the process. He's always at the meetings. Some of the communities have fairly small downtowns and growth areas, but they want them to, of course, be vital. Um, so, and these are all areas that developers should know are targeted for, hopefully for grants, for upgraded infrastructure, et cetera. Um, and that's one thing that you can use a comprehensive plan for is, uh, grants. The existing employment centers in Dunmore and Scranton are also targeted for growth. These are mixes of industrial, commercial, and office. This group, Scranton, Dunmore, and seven of the Abingtons communities is among just several of, um, the largest groups like this in Pennsylvania. The larger groups make much more of a difference in a, in any given region than just two, two or so communities working together. And throughout the state, the county planning departments assist the groups as, um, the way Mary Liz and Steve are assisting us now. Especially when the groups are larger than, say, three or so municipalities. So the public should stay tuned, um, if they want to be involved in the, in these zoning updates. And again, thank you for recognizing the importance of this project. Thank you for your support. We, I have some summaries with me, but the, the plan as a whole is right now on the, um, webpage of the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. And we have, um, committee members from three of the municipalities here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in.
What was your title again? I'm sorry.
My name?
Your title?
Um, I'm the Secretary of the, the groups.
Of the group. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm Scott Hahn, I'm the zoning officer for Newton Township. And, um, uh, let me say that, that this group really represents more than half of the population of Lackawanna County. And I think that it's such a good thing for this, this whole group. Uh, certainly in Newton Township, um, it's been 25 years since we redid our, uh, planning and zoning. And, um, this allows us to really address, uh, all of the issues that have put in, put Newton Township in, uh, court in the past and threatened with, with court, uh, proceedings because of, um, the requirements that we all have to address all of, all of the issues. And, and this really, um, puts the burden on the group as a whole, uh, keeping our individuality and, and the concerns that we all have as a group. And, uh, I certainly would like to thank, uh, Lackawanna County for, for their support as they've had in the past and, um, certainly think it's a good thing for all, uh, these committees, uh, as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having us here today. Uh, my name is Carol Scramali and I'm Councilwoman of Dunmore. And, um, as the second largest group in the, the Scranton Abington Planning Association with our population of 14,000, I just want to say that we wholeheartedly, um, do want to move forward with this plan. Um, we do want to rezone all of our ordinances. And, um, we also want to, um, just let you know that there are so many aspects of this plan that are good for our communities. One being that you get more points towards your grant application when you're part of a multi-municipal plan. And we're excited about that. And also to use the tools that this plan provides to revitalize our industrial centers and our growth centers.
What if they don't want to? What if the, the community doesn't want to do that?
We have unanimously throughout the council come together to approve this.
No, I understand, but what if the community doesn't want to do that?
The community has come forward, they come to our meetings, we talk about them. We've had many, many community meetings with the people.
Public hearings.
And they're all for it. Excuse me?
How many meetings did you have since this started?
I would say maybe six, what would you say? Throughout 10 years now.
Six meetings in 10 years?
No.
No?
No, it's been, it was many, many meetings when we were...
That I attended? Since I've been on council?
Yes.
Okay, uh, how many total in Dunmore, about?
In Dunmore?
Oh, how many meetings as a whole for Scranton Abington Planning Association?
No, you said in, in the community, so Dunmore, I would assume.
Yeah, I would say six in Dunmore.
In 10 years, you had six meetings.
Just for your, no, just for your zoning, six recently, like in the last summer, like year or two?
Yeah. So we've had many. We've had many public hearings and we intend to have more. And we welcome you to come. I mean, we'd love for you to come.
I, I will attend, um, you know, uh, but I just want to know if, you know, I have many questions on this. I voted no on this last time, I'll be voting no again, but, um, you know, I mean, I, I'm still looking for the law that says that every borough, village, and city has to, uh, use, um, you know, have a landfill or whatever else was explained to me in the past. I'm not finding that and I don't know where that is, Donnie. Do you know or does any of the solicitors know where that law is? It can't be exclusionary, but it doesn't demand that you provide it, does it? Because I can't find that.
Yeah, that's how, I was interpreting, it's got to provide specific areas to allow all uses. Okay, and you can't specifically demand restrictions that prevent certain... There are some uses just because of the nature of their uses that may not fit.
Right. So you can't put a landfill in every city, borough, or village?
They're not going to have one.
And that was what I was told is why they're, what they're trying to prevent, but I've never heard of such a thing and... Right. Right. So it really, that was the, the reason I was given that these, this regionalization was, was required is because, um, the state, which is what, um, the first speaker had talked about, Pennsylvania law, uh, said that for each of them, they had to have, uh, land, everyone was required to have land use for every individual item and the example I was given was a landfill. Um, so that would be ridiculous. I mean, um, you know, we had the same issues in Old Forge. We stopped a landfill from coming in, you know, so I mean, I, I don't, I don't believe that that's an actual fact, that this is required to stop these type of things from happening. And, um, you know, I want to know what, you know, we already have zoning ordinances in our, each municipality and village and city. Why do we need to regionalize it and have someone else tell us what their plan is? And can we say no to that if they decide that they want that specific plan provided?
Each community has the autonomy to decide what they want for their own community.
So then what's the point?
But this provides tools to help you get through the processes of rezoning, re, you know, uh, using, again, it gives you points on grants when you apply for grants because you're working with other municipalities. Uh, again, uh, as far as the, um, laws that concern providing for each use, okay? If your zoning ordinances say, "No, you, you know, we don't want certain uses here," well, that's different, but as a, as a region, yeah, you have to, you have to, um, rely on your own's ordinances, et cetera. But we come together as a group to say, "Okay, perhaps these areas over here want to remain more rural." And then the people come together in each community to say either yes or no. And so far, nine communities have said yes.
Well, when you say communities, are you talking about the council and each of those communities have said yes?
This has come before each of, each municipality's government, yes, local government.
Okay, because I know there's about three people that attend Old Forge's meetings when they go. So I just find that...
But they also have public hearings specifically for these also.
How, how much attendance did you have at those? Was it a, a large?
We had good attendance at ours. I don't know the numbers of people, I don't recall. I would say 30 or so.
30, okay. Yeah, that, that's what I mean. I mean, there's a lot of people that don't even know, you know, what I've talked about in this commission for the past, you know, three and a half years that I'm here. So, um, you know, it's, it's not indicative of the community at large because I know who attends the, I've, I've been to many of those meetings. I go to the school board meetings across our county. And, you know, what we're talking about is zoning ordinances that's rural, like, that's combining and regionalizing. So my concern is that, will that tell Old Forge, Scranton, someone else that they can't do something?
No, they're separate, they're separate to each other, right?
Old Forge is not included in this.
It's just an example, it's just an example. I'm just, I'm just saying as an example.
It's not part of the Scranton Abington Planning Association.
I know it's not, but I'm just saying, as an example, those that are a part of this, will they be, um, you know, would you stop them from doing something? Would they have to come to this regional planning position?
No, because each municipality has its own autonomy in deciding what they want for their own community. What this is, these are tools to use to forward different projects and different, um, different...
God bless you.
Visions that the town wants for their own community.
But if they want it...
It's just tools, it's not, and then the community has the power to say, "No, we don't want to use this tool, but we do want to use this tool." So there is, there is a page that lists all the tools and I would love for you to familiarize yourself on that page that shows you all the tools that you can use or not use as a community. You can choose not to use the tools, but you have other, you know, other things that are very important in the plan that will help you with your, with governing your own community.
I, I just think that...
For land use.
We, we, we elect our, our councils and we have zoning, uh, officers to do that job. So this is just yet another...
No, again, it provides tools. So I'd like you to familiarize yourself, I, I'm not sure...
But are, are zoning officers not familiar with the tools already?
Not as much as, we, we're going to become familiarizing them with them, yes.
Where do these tools come from and who's coming up with these ideas and what are they? What page are they on?
The state has formed these coalitions to provide, you know, any association, a, a planning association, the tools to use...
To do...
When, when they come together and form their own group. And on that note, I am going to have this gentleman speak. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Shannon Brown. Uh, I live in Clark Summit. I serve in the Clark Summit Borough Council, uh, Planning Commission and I've also been their appointed representative to what's referred to as SAPA. Uh, my background is, I'm a former professor of community and economic development. Uh, I'm also a former law professor, uh, and also an attorney focusing on, uh, these types of community development issues. The question... The questions that you're asking are excellent questions. How this actually works out is, is that this is really going to put Lackawanna County on the map to have a nine municipality cooperative agreement like this. Each municipality will retain their own zoning ordinances. All this does is bring each one of those municipalities into compliance with state and federal law. And right now, because the zoning ordinances are, in many cases outdated, those ordinances are subject to challenge. And what you have, and as the counselor was referring to, you have what are called exclusionary uses that are challenged on an ad hoc basis. That's when communities start spiraling out of control. And that's where you start having challenges with destabilizing your tax base and increasing the demands for services in areas. So this planning process and the implementation of that, which is the zoning process, is what we're in now. The planning process has already been completed, each of the municipalities have adopted that planning process, and we're simply in an implementation phase. But I do want to clarify, this is not some new super organization that's going to be dictating or mandating anything to these communities. It's completely voluntary that the communities themselves-
I understand.
Have seen the value of this type of cooperative agreement. If you don't do this, and I'm a cut to the chase kind of person, you know, if you don't do this, what you end up having is each municipality becomes targeted by predatory developers. And I'll say it that simply, that you end up reacting to those types of uses that may destabilize those communities. And again, may increase the need for sewer usage, may increase the need for new water services, may increase the need for new police services, new school districts, new school buildings. Really, when you look at it overall, this is an implementation that allows the community to make those decisions. But each community completely retains their autonomy. But there is an advantage to that. By us working together with this, we maybe, in the future, I'm not saying this will happen, but in the future, you could have the sharing of zoning enforcement officers, reducing the, you know, the cost to each one of the municipalities. You could have municipalities that are going to take a hard look at those types of new uses that are coming into communities that can really create problems, not only for the community, but also increase the number, the amount of police presence and things of that sort in those communities.
You said a whole lot there that, you know, I have a lot more questions now as you were speaking, so, I mean, we can go on all day. I have tons of questions.
I would be more-
One point I do want to make, Commissioner, I apologize. On your contract, we have consequential damages. The owner and EPD waive consequential damages, including but not limited to damages for loss of profits, loss of revenues, and loss of business, of business opportunities for claims, disputes, or other matters in question arising out of or relating to this agreement. So the way I take that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if a business decides to start up in a specific borough and the planning commission feels that that is not something that is going to meet the zoning ordinances, that they would either have to pay, you know, for the changes that they're going to build, or they would not be able to do that in that specific area. Is that correct or incorrect?
I would defer to the council's legal counsel, but I think that may be mixing some of the things that that contract would be specific-
It's hard not to, you just gave me a whole list of things that I could have tons of questions on, and you called somebody a predatory something.
Well, I-
Predatory, what would you call them?
It's sometimes referred to as predatory development, that if you have areas that do not have uses that are covered, you can have people that could come in and say, we're going to propose a use for your community, that the community may be very opposed to or may be inappropriate for that community. And that can cause issues and disputes. And you've seen them here locally-
And they do now, yeah.
Happens throughout the communities. This can help to provide a plan so that everybody knows. And foremost, and a lot of people don't know this, that zoning really does protect private property rights. And that's what it comes down to, and it looks at the collective private property rights of all the individuals in the communities. I'd be more than happy to come back, address the council with these types of issues, it's something we're interested in.
You all came here, so if you will come here to give information, you're going to be asked questions.
Sure.
So, you know, I mean, that's just the way it works. So you came in and, you know, you brought your information. I didn't hear from you at our work session, so I don't know how, you know, I know that we had voted on this before, nobody came in, so I'm wondering why our departments aren't the ones getting the grill here, but you were put up for the slaughter, so guess what?
Okay.
Anyway, so you're talking about exclusionary uses, and, you know, that's the law. It's the law, I don't like the fact that when I was told Pennsylvania law requires that each individual area provides for all use, because that's not accurate according to what I just heard. What I just heard is, now you're talking about exclusionary uses, which is completely different than saying that Pennsylvania law requires every area to provide these services like a landfill for their borough, city, or village. So that's incorrect. When I hear things like that happening, it infuriates me because it's not accurate, and that puts it out there to the public as though you have to do this, this is something they have to do, or they're going to have a landfill in their backyard. And I don't like when people do that to the community. I like when people actually have the facts out there without trying to claim inaccurate facts in regards to state law versus local law. So that's, when people do that, that's a red flag to me. So that's my first point. As far as the zoning ordinances and all that, I believe every community has a zoning officer. We go by specific areas in our communities to help us, and I would just be concerned that the areas that are being represented would lose some type of ability to do what they wanted to do in their own borough or municipality. And I don't see a reason for doing a regional plan unless those specific communities are having a hard time providing ordinances and zoning in their areas. And they need to unite to kind of work together, like you're saying, to provide zoning enforcement officers at a regional level rather than a local level. So I don't know if that's what you're referring to or if that's where it's headed. And, you know, I mean, there's a lot of questions that I think would be asked if more people were aware of this. I do believe that there were people at your meetings, but it's just something that I am not a believer in, okay? So I'm just being upfront with you.
No.
And if I were at your meetings, I would be asking a lot of other different questions. I was not. So you all came in and, you know, these are the questions that I asked in our work session of the people that did show up at our work session, this is what I was asking of them. I did vote no to this prior to this meeting. It's something that as, you know, someone who doesn't believe, I believe in limited government, I don't believe in, you know, all this, you know, consortium just to get grants or anything like that, and ability to get a better grant, I just don't believe in that. So it's nothing to do with you, I think you had a lot of courage coming in here and, you know, fighting for your cause, I appreciate the fact that you're up there. I encourage people to do this all the time, I wish more people did what you just did today. So congratulations on that. I think that fighting for your cause is a great initiative and I appreciate that, it says a lot about what you're doing, although I can't support it. So thank you so much for listening to me as well. Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman.
I would like to thank you for coming in. This is a big thing for your community, these are tools for your toolbox. I understand what you're trying to do. Each community is separate from the other, but you work together. You had public meetings, hearings, I mean, you brought it back to your community, everything that you're asked to do, you had six meetings in Dunmore, that's a lot of meetings.
10 years.
You know, this is something that's going to be helpful for what you're looking towards in the future. And everyone that's here are stakeholders in their communities, and it matters to us that you come out and you have your voices heard. And I'd like to thank our staff who helped out with them, because this matters to these communities, and they needed these tools in their toolbox. And now you'll have them. And you'll be able to work together on other situations that will come up, and it'll provide an opportunity for you to get an increase on grants that can help with Dunmore or into the rural areas. I'd like to just thank all four of you for coming out today. And this is what, you know, stepping up the plate's about. You know, you're an elected official, you know it's like being on council all the time. You know, people come in, they ask you questions. But with that being said, these tools will be very helpful to each and every one of your municipalities. And I totally believe in it, and I'm glad that you're here, and I'm glad that you had your hearings and you had your meetings and you brought everybody out, and you got the feeling of the community. You can't bring it to every single person, it's totally impossible. So people are asked to come out to meetings, if they don't show up, no one can control that. You know what I mean, it's impossible to. But the ones that did, I'm sure came out, gave their opinions, you took their opinions to heart because you believe in your community and you utilize that as part of what you were going to do to bring the message forward of where you're going to do the changes in zoning. So I'd like to thank the four of you for being here today. Commissioner Terriani?
It's a great concept and I'm hoping it goes forward. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just want to answer about the number of meetings. Back during the planning phase, there was a meeting once a month, we had a public email list, and people came, the public that was interested came to those meetings. We must have had 50 meetings, and the public was always invited. So I'd like to say that. And it is a voluntary project, and all the communities retain all of their autonomy. Thank you so much.
And that's the other thing I want to bring, and it's your time. You volunteer your time because a lot of people inside the communities don't want to step to the plate. And you're here to be their voice and to get the tools that they need for zoning to make sure the communities are safe. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, resolutions, 19-0027, approving current payables?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving current payables, be resolved at the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers from 274770 through 275848, inclusive totaling And electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $8,889,347.97.
Gary, how's everything? Everything's good, Commissioner?
Commissioners, each invoice is in order and has been approved, audited, approved, and paid. And there are no legal fees in this batch related to the prison probe.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve current payables, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0017?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into an amendment for the Northeastern Pennsylvania Mutual Aid Agreement. Be resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, does hereby enter into an amendment to the Northeastern Pennsylvania Mutual Aid and Cooperation Agreement for the County Counterterrorism Task Force and hereby authorizing North Hampton County to be the fiscal agent as attached. Here to address the board on this is Dave Hahn, our Director of Emergency Services. Dave?
Good morning, Commissioners. Basically, what this is, is in the year 2000, Lackawanna County entered into an agreement with Carbon, Lehigh, Monroe, North Hampton, Pike, Susquehanna, and Wayne Counties to create the Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force, which is a federal program and paid for by the federal government. Federal government requires one county to be the fiduciary county for all the entities involved. Monroe County's been handling it since 2000, and they decided they no longer want to do it. So basically, what this is, is an agreement that North Hampton County isn't going to take over the responsibility of being the fiduciary county for the terrorism task force. That's basically, that's all it is. So we just have to agree to that as being part of the counterterrorism task force. And the agreement was sent to Mr. Frederickson.
You're just changing the receivers.
Just changing the fiduciary counties is what it is.
Dave, I just have one question. Why'd they change the name?
Pardon me?
Did they change the name of this as well?
They did, they changed the name back in 2009.
Oh, so we just included it in this contract, they're not changing it today?
Right, yeah, I don't know why it was included in this, but it does say that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an amendment to the Northeast Pennsylvania Mutual Aid Agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Dave.
Commissioner, we're going to vary from the agenda briefly. Can we do item number 19-0024? It's a proposal from Geographic from Mike Brown, because Mike has to get back to work, he has some IT issues in the building.
Come on, Mike.
And this is a resolution, Commissioner, accepting the proposal from Geographic, be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, does hereby accept the proposal from Geographic IT to propose on-demand GIS operational and technical support services to be split between the assessor's office, emergency services department, and planning and economic development offices. Contract to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2019, and not to exceed $63,900. And here to address the board is IT Deputy Director, Mike Brown. Mike?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hey, Mike, how are you?
As Don mentioned, this is an ongoing agreement that we have with Geographics to support the various departments that actually use GIS software. That would be 911, the assessors, and economic development. So by continuing this agreement, they have the support they need, and we allow to update the systems to actually help the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
And this is just an annual renewal, Mike, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this contract's been in place for a while now.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion accepting proposals for the Geographic IT. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, 19-0011?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution awarding the Arts and Culture Program and Project Grants, be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, does hereby award the 2019 Lackawanna County Arts and Culture Program Grants in the amount of $225,700, and the 2019 Lackawanna County Community Arts and Culture Project Grants in the amount of $61,700 as attached here too. And here to address the board on that is our Deputy Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McQuigley. Maureen?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is just the annual approval of our grants that we award to our community organizations to keep everything transparent and equitable. There's two different streams. So the programs are for the more established nonprofit arts and culture organizations, they submit a report every year and are reviewed every other year. And then every year, we have an open project grant call where people can apply for $3,000 for a community project, and they're welcome to all, and they're reviewed by a panel. So this is what we're presenting for approval for 2019.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion awarding the Arts and Culture Program Project Grants, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. 19-0012?
This is a resolution awarding the Lead-Based Paint Inspection, Mold Testing, Radon Testing, Remediation Services, and Demolition Services Contract, be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, does hereby award the Lead-Based Paint Inspection, Mold Testing, Radon Testing, Remediation Services, and Demolition Services to BADA Environmental Associates of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and is hereby enter into an agreement not to exceed $50,000 to commence upon execution and shall continue on an as-needs basis for up to three years. And here to address the board on that is Peggy Piccotti from our OECD Office.
Hey, Peggy, how are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. So this is just awarding BADA Environmental the contract to, for the Lead-Based Paint Inspection, Mold Testing, Radon Testing, and Remediation Services to help us with our clearance and demo projects.
What are these used for, Commissioner, you know, with projects?
This is for if we're doing tear downs and stuff, right?
Uh huh, with the CDBG program, our tear downs, our clearance and demos.
See, we got to make sure because of the lead paint and everything on it.
Yeah, they just go in and they'll assess the home and make sure everything's okay to tear it down. And this is the company that- And this is the company that...
Lead, asbestos, anything that's going to cause an issue.
And this is specifically for CDBG funding?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion awarding the lead-based paint inspection, mold testing, and radon testing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, 19-0013.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into a CDBG cooperation agreement. Be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the following municipalities: Archibald, Blakely, Clark Summit, Dixon City, Dunmore, German, Jessup, Mayfield, Old Forge, Oliphant, Scott, Taylor, and Troop for the fiscal year of 2017 CDBG program administration. And here again to address the board is Peggy Piccotti. Peggy?
So this is just the annual cooperation agreement that we go in to represent the municipalities that Don just spoke about. So we're on behalf of these municipalities, going to represent them through the CDBG program.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into the CDBG cooperation agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0014.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the CDBG modifications. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to submit modifications of the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Economic Development. One, Lackawanna County on behalf of the following Blakely Borough Community Development Block Grant Programs for the federal fiscal year 2014. The modification will transfer $83,805.64 out of the improvements line item and delete the East Mountain Road Bridge Project. $83,805.64 will be transferred to the street improvements line item for the Josephine and Mott Street Improvements Project. B, fiscal year 2015, the modification will transfer $63,092 out of the street improvements line item and delete the East Mountain Road Bridge Project. The funds will be transferred as follows. $18,740.64 will be transferred to the street improvements line item for the Josephine and Mott Streets Improvement Project. And $44,351.36 will be transferred to create the street improvement line item for the Mott Haven Section Street Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the county has complied with all the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. And again, here is Peggy to address the board.
As Don said, this is just a modification that's required through the CDBG program to transfer the funds. The first is to transfer them into the Josephine and Mott Street Improvement Project, which is complete. And the second is going to be the Mott Haven Section, which we're doing three streets over there. And with the 2015 funds, we're going to create that project.
Okay. Can I have a motion authorizing the CDBG modifications? Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
On the question?
On the question?
Yeah, I just had one of the community had asked me, and I asked you this in the meeting.
Yeah.
How are you able to transfer this money to another project?
So because it's within that municipality, we can transfer it. So that's what the modification is used for. We're just going to take that money from that year and put it into a new project. So the project, the East Mountain Road and Bridge, that is in Blakely, which is confusing. Yeah. So that was deemed not eligible.
There you go. Thank you.
And Peggy, Blakely Borough is aware of this and they're in favor of this?
They are, yes. They actually passed the resolution on Monday night.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, 19-0015.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the filing of a RACP grant, authorizing the filing for redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Lackawanna County Central Court Efficiency Project, whereas Lackawanna County Central Court Efficiency Project entails design, construction, infrastructure, and other related costs of an acquired property at 1360 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, into a new central court Wyoming annex, and whereas the County of Lackawanna is eligible as an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source to finance the project, and whereas Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth redevelopment assistance capital program for the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of $2 million to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. And here to address the board is Sandy Upchinsky. Sandy?
Hi, Sandy. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is for actually the rehabilitation of the building that has been purchased behind the prison, which will allow, hopefully, if we are awarded the $2 million, it will literally recoup some of the cost of renovation and construction in order to make the building safe to Pennsylvania Department of Corrections and police standards to be able to do processing of prisoners literally on-site. So instead of transporting them from downtown, they would be literally kind of in the backyard of the prison, which allows for a little more security and allows for reduction of costs in transporting people back and forth for remand.
No one leaves the jurisdiction of the prison. It's actually, it's a great project. And we're hoping this will be great if we were able to receive this $2 million.
It would be wonderful.
And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
A motion authorizing the filing for an R cap grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thanks. Yes. Sandy, thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you.
19-0016.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving the environmental planning and design and implementation of the multi-municipal comprehensive plan of the Scranton Abington's Planning Association. Whereas Lackawanna County on behalf of the city of Scranton and the boroughs of Clark Summit, Clark Screen, Dalton, and Dunmore, and the townships of Newton, South Abington, Waverly, and West Abington, applied for and received funding through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to update the nine local zoning ordinances and zoning maps. And whereas the Scranton Abington's Planning Association Steering Committee for the project interviewed four firms to undertake the project and selected environmental planning and design to complete the project. And whereas environmental planning and design agrees to complete the project at a cost not to exceed $159,505. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve a contract between the County of Lackawanna on behalf of the city of Scranton, the boroughs of Clark Summit, Clark Screen, Dalton, Dunmore, and the townships of Newton, South Abington, Waverly, and West Abington with environmental planning and design in an amount not to exceed $159,505 as attached here too. And here to speak on this today is Mary Liz Donato. Mary Liz?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mary Liz.
You know, as we've heard already about this grant in Abington's plan, what we're doing today is entering into a contract with environmental planning and design out of Pittsburgh. As part of our grant application to DCED back in August to undertake this project, we had to prepare an RFP and interview consulting firms. We did have four firms that came in. The SAPA committee interviewed all four of the firms and they have selected environmental planning and design. Again, we are acting as the administrator of the grant and the facilitator of this project. This group from Pittsburgh is going to be working with all nine communities individually on adopting their portion of what they want to see come out of this SAPA plan.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Well, I just grilled four people that came in, but now you're in charge of the actual plan, so you know, do you have any comment? I guess I would ask, what do you feel is the reason for this being implemented? And...
The reason for this is this is something that the state is advocating, its multi-municipal planning. It is to bring communities together to work with one another as opposed to competing with one another. You do, if you have enough land area, you do have to provide for every legal land use if you have your own ordinance. There are some cases where the communities are very small, half a square mile in area that couldn't conceivably put all of the land uses in there. In that case, that's okay. But communities like Newton Township, Scranton, Waverly, that have enough land area, they have to provide. And Newton Township might not want a manufacturing facility because they're a rural community, but because of their size, they have to provide an area for that. But participating in this plan, when they're going to work together, come up with their own ordinances, but decide what land uses are going in their borders, that's going to benefit those communities. Like Newton would not have to do industrial if they don't want.
There's only one where we just say yes or no.
Correct, correct. Whereas like another example is the city of Scranton, again, is a large area. They have to provide for agricultural uses. Well, they don't need to do that now because it's going to go in Newton Township or West Abington or where it really should be. So you know, and they do get points, you know, for grant applications if they participate in a plan. But this is sound planning in the state. For many years, too many local governments have been competing, you know, for the things. This is a group that's going to work together and remain autonomous.
Well, I just, with this agricultural area in Scranton, I mean, has the law changed in the past three years? I mean, hasn't the state law?
No, and chances are that agriculture's not coming into the city.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't...
It's not like they're getting punished by the state.
Within their ordinance, they have to put us, they have to say agriculture and they have to find somewhere to put it. In reality, it's not going to come.
Never has, right.
Right.
That's my point.
But you do have to provide...
You're checking the box. That's basically what you're doing. You're checking the box.
Out of piece of paper, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's just, I understand what you're saying, but when it was first presented to me, it was presented as it has to happen that way. And I was like, I couldn't find that in the law. I mean, I've read it. And I was like, I mean, there's books. There's books of this.
It's case law over the years. If you try and exclude something and somebody challenges you, you're going to lose because you didn't provide for a legal use, basically, is what that, you know? But when they're doing it as a group, they could designate within the group where that's going to go as opposed to each one doing...
So let's take that a little further. So somebody wants to have a farm in Scranton, they're going to sue the city of Scranton because they didn't allow it? Or how would that work?
They could if they don't allow it. I believe they do allow it for somewhere. I'm not really sure. Probably somewhere near Montage Mountain.
Yeah, it has to be sectional area. It's, it wouldn't be like on the 200 block of Jackson Street or something like that.
Right.
Yes, I mean, it's just...
But they could, yes. If they came in and said, I want to start a farm in the city of Scranton and you don't allow for this use, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to file a lawsuit.
And now I know that this happened throughout our area with, you know, landfills and everything, and it can be fought. So I'm just saying, it can be fought at the local level.
It could be.
So my question then was, well then, why do we need this regional plan? I just don't understand. And your answer is, from what I could see, is to get grants and to be more eligible for grants and to provide, you know, so that there's limited competition between the boroughs to limit that, to limit the competition.
Correct.
Which I don't agree with, so.
And also, so for zoning and everything else, the zoning could change.
And local communities, they don't want to be challenged. I mean, that's a cost to them. They want to have an ordinance that's going to work for their community and not have to deal with court cases.
When you say competition, which competition would you be referring to? Like businesses that start up in one community can't start up in another that's close by?
Well, they could if this community, no. For example, a large industrial facility. All of these nine communities now have to provide an area for that. As the SAPA group, maybe that's going to go in the Dunmore area or the Scranton area or South Abington Township, but not Newton Township or not in Waverly where you really wouldn't want to see an industrial facility. So that way, the developer, for him, they like the regional concept because it promotes economic development, because they're working together. It's just sound planning and that's what the state's been advocating the last, since the year 2000.
I understand what you're saying. I just, now if it's for large industrial facilities, it would also be for small business.
Absolutely. And I believe every community...
So what I'm saying, I mean, I see what you're saying about large, but you got to also look at the small businesses too.
Absolutely. And I believe, and again, I'm not speaking for these communities because they're going to decide themselves, but I believe that small businesses are going to be allowed in all of the communities because everybody's going to want that little neighborhood area for commercial, but they don't want Walmart.
Yeah.
But can you discriminate between what industry is going to do that and what can't?
You could decide what types of land uses you want.
The zoning board could just say yes or no to this stuff.
But they could, and the zoning board could do that anyway. So again, which brings me right back to what's the point? I just, you know, if the local zoning board can do this, what's the point? I mean, that's just where I continue to go back to.
It just makes for more sound planning and alleviating challenges.
Because their ideas are better than the zoning board of that borough.
Well, and the zoning board, you have to pay, you have to file an appeal and pay to go have a zoning hearing. It's just more, it just gives the community a better plan to move forward without having to go through all these appeal processes and expenses.
So then the...
Both on the developer and the community.
So who, what appeal process are you referring to?
Well, if you're denied a permit for some reason or another, you could appeal it.
Right.
Starts with the zoning hearing board and then it moves to the court to come plead.
Right.
That's an expense.
Yeah. So now what would be the difference with regional?
They're going to have more up-to-date ordinances. They're hoping they're going to avoid that. But there are, there are always going to be instances where you have to go to the zoning board. It could be small issues, it could be big issues, but this is trying to alleviate the bigger issues.
So you just said something very interesting to me. So the permit process would be alleviated somehow with this plan?
No, no, no. It would just make it a lot more easier for the communities that they don't have to worry about appeals as much as they do now because the ordinances that they have currently are severely outdated.
Well, our ordinances were just redone. I mean, I don't know. I just...
These are designed to the communities.
They're going to be designed for each community that decides how they want to handle it.
So you're going to say, well, Scranton will have industrial, Newton will have agricultural...
Yes.
And neither of the two shall combine, ever?
No, they could come back, I mean, every 10 years, it's a good idea to look at your plan. They may want to change it.
They're allowed, they did this.
They did this.
They came together, they set this all up.
They're just asking us to coordinate the project.
They're asking us to coordinate. That's all this is. They asked for this, they understand the individual needs of their communities. That's why they came in front of us. That's why we're here.
Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You know, I understand your thoughts on it.
It's state is advocating it, is what you just said.
They are, they are.
But these communities are opting to be involved.
They're agreeing, yeah.
So like, it's just like us having something, I mean, we have a public hearing, they had public hearings inside of their own orders, so.
And they're going to have more as this moves forward.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving the environmental planning and design implement of the multi-municipalities. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Niteriani?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for answering my questions.
Nineteen dash zero zero two zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution entering into an agreement with Johnson College. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Johnson College for the administration and operation of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Educational Partnership Grant Project, providing career awareness opportunities addressing occupational pathways within the aviation sector for 58th grade students to be effective January 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2019. And here to address the board today on this is Virginia Toronto, our Workforce Development Board Executive Director. Virginia?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I just want to preface this in that the business education partnership grant was a grant that was received by the Workforce Development Board from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, specifically to provide career awareness activities to youth in mostly the intermediate, the secondary schools, but we are venturing into the elementary schools. It has lo, it long been recorded that the earlier that youngsters learn about careers, start to think about careers and learn about careers, the better career decisions they will make as they proceed through intermediate school and through the high school level. In many cases, they need to start thinking about what courses they need in order to proceed into certain occupations. For instance, algebra is needed in just about every act, and kids don't know this, but they, it's needed in just about every occupation, and you don't think about that. So, these activities, these next four activities are designed to make youngsters aware of the specific activities. Again, the Johnson College project, and, and I will also say that the board went out with a competitive request for proposals to the community, and these were the four proposals from the community that were approved by the Workforce Development Board at its quarterly meeting on, last quarterly meeting in November, November 29th. The Johnson College proposal, again, targets youngsters in the eighth grade, and we would like to get them down to the airport so they could take a look at all of the different jobs that are available in the aviation industry. It's not just being a pilot. Over the next two decades, there's going to be need for 120 aviation technicians. And once that occurs, then Johnson will work with the airport to develop a curriculum so that we can, we can address the needs of training youngsters and adults for jobs in the aviation industry.
That's great. Does the board have any questions?
I, I just have one. I think this is a great program. Congratulations. I just want to know, does the grant dictate what careers you should be highlighting? Or does that choice come from the community that's requesting it?
There is no eligibility with, they have to live in Lackawanna County, but there is no eligibility for this, income eligibility for this project.
Oh, good. So, then how did you choose AVPs? I guess I'm wondering, how do you choose AVP in Johnson's?
They're going to work with five Lackawanna County schools, and it will be the schools that will identify the participants.
Oh, so they choose who they want the kids to work. The schools will decide on what, like, AVP they wanted to go to or Johnson's technical school?
It would be an interest. If, I mean, if there's an interest with, if a youngster has an interest in going in that direction, they would be the first ones to be enrolled.
Oh, good. I mean, I, I think it's greatly, it's a great project. Congratulations on this. I, I appreciate your work on that.
We actually, I brought it to the board's attention about three or four, about five years ago, for a class trip, instead of like, some schools just, just can't afford to go do certain things, but they could go for a tour of the airport, and the kids love it. It's like a two-hour tour. They, and they take them through customs, they stamp them and stuff. It's really, really good. And this is at a young age, this is elementary, but did they even go further that there's positions out there? Mechanics, airport, I mean, there's so many different things that you could do at the airport, so.
There's gonna be a shortage.
And there's gonna be a shortage.
There's, yeah, and they were saying mechanics, there's not gonna be any in our meeting. What was the stats on that? Do you know on airport mechanics and what they make?
They make a lot of money.
They do very well.
Yeah.
And they're, they're gonna be in high demand.
But it's good to be, have another option for social areas.
I believe Carl said they're gonna need like 120,000 of them in the next 10 years, yeah.
That's amazing. 120,000, that's a lot of them.
Wow. That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into an agreement with Johnson College. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Virginia.
Commissioner, I'm gonna suggest if we combine the next three, 21, 22, and 23, because they're all Virginia, and it's all the same program, it's just with the different colleges, so if you're okay with that, we'll combine them.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Commissioner. Resolution 1921, and entering into an agreement with Lackawanna College. Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with Lackawanna College for the administration and operation of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Education Partnership Grant Project to provide 48 Lackawanna County intermediate-grade level students with STEM educational experiences and robotic building instruction to be effective, again, January 1st, 2019 through June 30th. Resolution 22, entering into an agreement with Northeast Educational Intermediate Unit. And Resolution Number 23, entering into an agreement with Northeastern Pennsylvania Industrial Resources. All of them are under the same project. And Virginia, do you have any questions?
Along the same lines, it's providing career, excuse me, career awareness activities to intermediate, primarily intermediate students. One thing that's a little bit different is the proposal from Northeast Educational Intermediate Unit, which has a variety of activities, including developing a curriculum to teach to third, for teachers to present to third and sixth grade students on, in-demand occupations. Again, we're venturing into the lower, the elementary levels with this project, and this is something new. And something else that's very interesting is that NEIU is going to develop an informational resource packet for students with disabilities who, when they complete their individual employment plans and are graduating from high school, will have material that tells them of employers that are willing to hire these students.
Great.
Nice. Okay. I'd like to make a motion for 19 dash zero zero two one, 19 dash zero zero two two, and 19 dash zero zero two three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Virginia.
Thank you very much. Great job.
That was good, very good. 19 dash zero zero one eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution awarding a performing arts audit. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the audit for the Performing Arts Center Authority to Kahansky and Company, 3939 Bernie Avenue Music, for the year's end at December 31st, 2018, and December 31st, 2019, at a fee of $7,500 per year. Here to address the board is our CFO, Tom Durkin. Tom?
Hey, Tom. Thank you, Don. Commissioners, this is just a, an engagement letter to essentially renew the engagement for the same company that's been doing the audit for the Performing Arts Center Authority for the last five years. That's all it is.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion accepting the proposal, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion awarding the performing arts audit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oterian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Opportunity for the public-
Now, one more item.
I thought we did, Mike?
No, no, we got 19.
Okay, all the McClure, geez, okay.
This is a resolution, Commissioners, accepting the proposal from the McClure Company. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from the McClure Company of Wilkes-Barre for the replacement of the rooftop units at the Jefferson Building for a total of $92,922. Here to address the board again is Tom Durkin, our CFO.
Thank you again, Don. What this is, Commissioner, is an attempt to finalize updating the HVAC equipment in the Gateway Building. We've had, for years, issues with the system in the Gateway Building, not working entirely correctly. My understanding is, most often, when the heat came on, the air conditioning would come on, too, and it was very cold in some parts of the building, very warm in other parts of the building. Our maintenance HVAC guy, Mike Logan, along with some people from McClure, over the past four or five months, have been going through and essentially updating the guts within, within the building, and have most of that updated and ready to go. This is kind of the finalization of the project. Since the building is essentially empty right now because of the move, we thought it was a good opportunity to get McClure, who is our maintenance, HVAC maintenance contractor, to look at replacing the units that are on the roof there that run the system, that are in the range of 22 to 25 years old each. While they're currently working, we felt that if we could get new units up there, the system would be more efficient. And then, the entire system, the HVAC system in the Gateway Building, should be essentially trouble-free for the next 20 years or so. And that's what this is, to just kind of finish that project.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion accepting proposals for the McClure Company. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Holdewan, it's 101 Penn Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Just want to say that I've taken algebra in high school, college, in various military classes that I had to take over the years, including in the National Cryptologic School at NSA. And sad to say, I have never used it. But I will tell you that taking algebra and trig and the differential calculus, even though I've never used one of them ever in my 69 years, they do teach you a level of critical thinking, which then applies to everything you do in life, so. Those who might be snickering at having to take algebra, not many, okay, raise your hand if you used algebra in your life. Not many, not many. But I think what she said was, well, taken. Those are good programs. I congratulate you for having microphones. I can now hear you. I also congratulate you. I've seen some signs put up, especially on the elevator. It says, "Fifth floor, Commissioners Council Conference Room," you know, it's so great. I hope you get rest of the signs all up.
It's coming together.
Speaking of coming together, I am curious. The old store in Fister Building, which you used to occupy, appears to be a much smaller building than this one is. Do you know the, the differences in square footage between the two buildings, what the square footage was there and what it is here?
It was like 90,000 or something, 90, something like that. I'm, I'm not sure.
And here?
Uh, 255,000.
Okay. Are you gonna fill up all that space? Because it seems to me there's a lot of-
Bursting at the seams.
We're bursting. We have a lot, yeah.
We have enough room for everybody that we could.
Okay. Are they still moving in?
Yeah, we still have to get family court, yep.
Okay. So, you do have a need for the 250,000 square feet, okay?
We could use another building.
We're, we're moving domestic relations down. That was up in Mayfield. We're moving the election office back up here.
All the locations that were rentals.
All the, the registered wills, recorded deeds that were all in different buildings.
Because when I was here in the first week of January, it seems like it was like, whoa, a lot of open vistas. So, I'm glad to see you're moving people in, and that you're gonna be able to use all this.
13 sites. Now, this is just downtown Scranton alone. We went from 13 locations to five. And those five are like locations we just literally have to have. So, we got, you got work release, you got the courthouse, you have probation, you have DA, or the gateway, that's the gateway. That's our building, which the district is gonna eventually move into, and then us. So, that's it, from 13 to five. So, it is one stop. And most of those are things, are things that most people don't use. A lot of people don't have to go to court. A lot of people aren't dealing with work release, but we have it. I mean, a lot of people aren't dealing with probation. But central everything is right here for the people, for their everyday use.
And what's the projected date from when everybody will be moved in?
February 1st, beginning of February.
February 1st, good, okay.
Family court is the last one to move, and they're supposed to be moving next week, so, yeah.
And get all that signage up, right?
We're getting, we're getting everything together, Joan. Everything, listen, I have been involved in a lot of construction projects. There's gonna be people still around here for months to come, and we're gonna get all the bugs out very soon, so.
I was pleased to see that we had no increase in the legal fees with regard to the prison investigation. Have you started a toll yet on your invoices for coming here into the Globe Store in this new center?
I really have to correct you on this, Joan. The, the expenditures for the attorneys that you're referring to and continue to refer to at the $600,000 mark was because of an action that was overzealousness on the part of another government entity, not ours. And that cost is specific to weeding through the, how many records, solicitor, did we have? Millions. 13 million. 13 million items, most of which had nothing to do with what we handed over to them to look into. And we had to get an attorney to go through all that, what they pulled, to make sure that we weren't gonna get sued from another department for handing it over to them.
And we invited them, and we invited them to come in here, too.
I mean, it has nothing to do with the initial costs of, so, we, that money is not going to support any of the officers that may have been involved. It's not going to involve, support any of the costs associated with defending anyone. It is specific to the costs of going through, sorting through all those things that were pulled, that had no reason to be pulled in the first place. So, it was an additional expense to this board that we didn't need to have. So, it had nothing to do with what everybody keeps referring to as the prison investigation, per se, as to the costs of their legal defense. None, correct?
It's correct in the most part. The bulk of the class was referring to try to protect confidential information.
Right.
It was included with 13 million in, although the argument on that must be with courts. There is additional cost because we provided that any employee that was asked to go in front of the grand jury, that we would provide that counsel. It could be their choosing, but if they became the focus or a target or charged, it ended there. It was just, so, they are employees, and this was something-
But the specific attorneys, the speci-
Yeah, the bulk of, the bulk of-
The attorneys that we're referring to, that she's talking about with the 600,000?
Right. They, they initially evaluate this and made a determination that it would take roughly four minutes to go through each piece of email, determine whether it was confidential. At 13 million, that would have been 10 years. Then they narrowed it down and got, the AG agreed that they would do a, a program to search for specific terms. Ultimately, that was 100 and some. That would have only taken two years to go through. Then they narrowed it down further, and from the 13 million, they got it down to like 28,000 items, all right? So, then they had to go through each 28, each piece of information, review it, determine if there was a confidentiality, a privilege, then create a privileged log for those that were privileged, and turn over all the other items. That's what they've been doing, and it was a Herculean task. It was a lot of time and a lot of effort because you gotta keep in mind, I mean, emails from judges to their law clerks, emails from the DA's office on other cases, emails from our human services, area of the aging, children and youth relative to children.
Public defender, criminal defense.
Defender, the public defender's office. Those were all brought into this mix, and a lot of them had privileges which you, as Commissioners, had an obligation to protect. You couldn't simply allow confidential information to be out there, even though it's the AG's. You still have an obligation to protect that information, and that's what the county commissioners did.
Thank you for expanding on that, because I just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
For example, in the public defender's office, if emails were taken there involving some particular client, and they were wrongfully divulged, okay, that person could file a suit against the county. Now, now, magnify that, multiply that by hundreds or thousands of people. So, that's what the liability issue was. The other thing, which I think we had discussed previously, is we have seen remarks that the county is under criminal investigation.
They are not.
That is a completely incorrect statement.
Thank you.
And, and it's just, it's just wrong to say that. Certain prison guards may have committed, and I don't know if they did or didn't, may have committed criminal acts. They are, their conduct is being looked at. The county, per se, is not. I would, I would compare it to a bank that has records for some racketeer. They subpoena all the bank records. The bank isn't under investigation. The individual is.
Thank you, Joan.
We just, and just, this, this is not unusual to the county. If you read the papers, you'll see there was a, some activity up in Greenfield Township. That, that sewer authority's broke right now. They went from, I think it's 85 bucks a quarter to 85 bucks a month. One of the reasons, from what I, what I understand, is that there were same sweeping requests that they had to do what you guys did, what the Commissioners did, was hire lawyers, pay a ton of money to have all that stuff reviewed. That's actually a good reason for what has transpired up there. Same situation. One federal, one federal, one agency, kind of really given, given the business to another one, another county, county entity.
I, I appreciate expanding on that, because that is another point that I was gonna bring up, is that we are not under, this body is not under criminal investigation. And to insinuate that it is in any way, shape, or form is incorrect. It's incorrect.
And the, your problem is exactly, you know, since we're on this topic, usually we don't talk, usually we wait, and then we-
I was just curious of that.
But the truth of the matter is, like, there's so many departments in Lackawanna County. It's like painting a brush and saying, "The whole place is in trouble." I mean, that's an issue that's, that's happening out at the prison, you know, and it's, it's being worked on. But the rest of Lackawanna County runs and goes on every single day of the week. And there's a lot of great departments, there's a lot of great things going on inside of Lackawanna County government. There just is, just is. Okay.
Well, I will have to respectfully disagree. I understand what you're saying, but since I retired in 1998 and came back to Scranton, there's just been one scandal after another involving the Lackawanna County prison.
That's the prison, though.
I'm sorry?
That's with the prison. That's with the workers.
I understand that. I understand that. And I think it's important for people to realize the spin-off, what you've had to do by hiring these lawyers, and there is a cost, okay? There is a cost that we have never gotten our arms around the prison, apparently, to make sure, you know, that we put those scandals to an end. And I've only been back 20 years.
And that's when it's from. Was it from like 99 or something, 95?
But I'm sorry, you know, I mean, wardens who had people working, prisoners working for them, all kinds of things that were going on.
We're going off. This is, that's, that, those people were, that's over, that's part of it.
You need the mic, honey.
Some significant steps to preclude this from occurring.
I mean, that's against the rules.
Cameras everywhere.
Let me tell you what the best oversight is over governmental misconduct at any level, in any institution, and that is the interest of a concerned citizenry. And if knowing what this figure is, month after month, sensitizes the local population, that's a good thing. I'm not saying that any of you are, are under criminal investigation, but I'm saying is that the local citizenry, people who never bother to get out and vote, who never attend a meeting, the only thing they really care about often is when they get hit in the wallet, and that's unfortunate. And that's the reason I ask this again, and again, and again.
Joan, I have no problem with you asking that, and keep saying it. Just keep saying that the AG is costing us $600,000 at the county level. Fine, but don't, don't make it look as though it's our investigation, because it's not.
Shame on us, okay, if we don't get that prison under control once and for all. And I'm not saying that the current allegations have any substance. No one knows. It has to go through the judicial process, okay? However, it bothers me that in 20 years, there have been a succession of incidents down there, okay, which have been proven to have involved misconduct. So, now we're in another iteration of allegations. The only way we're gonna stop that pattern is for people, the citizens, to say, "Enough is enough. We're watching." And I think that's the best way, whether it's the Scranton School District, whether it's the City of Scranton, or any county element. It's only a concerned citizenry that puts the stuff to, to, to rest.
Joan, this Board of Commissioners, and I, and I'm really talking out of place here. This should be under Commissioner New's business, which the next meeting will be. We asked for the investigation.
That's right.
We asked for this to happen. We made sure that we were diligent on it, so we are correct.
And you've done your due diligence.
We did our job, and we're trying to make sure that people are safe out there. We are.
What bothers me is the lack of concern of many people who reside in here, who won't even bother to vote, who don't follow current, current events, okay? And sometimes, the only way you can get their attention is by telling them, "Do you know what the figure is today?" And, and that, because that's the only thing that has any meaning to them. They don't care about anything else, except, "Are my taxes going up?"
But they're not.
And that's where you're gonna have to get their attention, unfortunately. And you know that's true. But moving on. I wasn't here your last meeting, I had a medical appointment, but I am, I am interested in the $3,800, you know, that, that tax lien that, you know, we, we got hit with in the last couple of months. Is Mr. Durkin still here, or he left? Okay. Well, maybe you can answer this. Okay, well, maybe you can answer this. Did we ever identify how that happened? Was correspondence misrouted as we were moving from one building to another? How that happened? Did, you know, something get lost in the mail?
We'll wait till Commissioner New Business, because we actually went, do you want to answer that?
Well, I'm, we're not sure exactly how it happened. The notices came in somewhere, but they didn't make their way to the financial office where they should have been, to the treasurer's office, so we're not sure, we're not sure where they went to.
I will make, I will make a recommendation as an individual taxpayer, you know, I know what ten ninety-nines and other documents I should be getting, you know, prior to having to file my various tax forms. Uh, and if I'm missing one, and I've just moved from one address to another, you know, my radar will go up if they're not in there by February first. One of the things that every organization should do, and we did this in the military, is, you know, you have internal controls, so that somebody who handles your taxes, so to speak, uh, is looking for these documents, and if they don't pop, somebody's going to ask the question, what happened to that document? Somebody should be aware of that.
Yeah.
Now, I-
That's an over, that's an oversimplification. Uh, your house is a lot different than Lackawanna County.
I understand that.
Taxes are a lot higher, and the payments did go out. The difference was-
They were paid, I know they were paid.
They had changed, they had changed the rate, and we didn't get notice of the rate change until after they had already been paid.
That's right.
And then when we received, they, evidently, they sent notices indicating that we had paid the wrong amount, but where those notices went to, we're not sure. However, I, I do know, uh, Tom Durkin did correct, contact the, the state, and those notices are now going to be sent to the treasurer's office. He made sure that they're the designated recipient of all, all notices going forward.
Well, see, you've done the correct thing. You have implemented an internal control, so this situation will never arise again.
We hope not.
Okay, well-
But there's no guarantee.
No guarantee, but you've done what is reasonable, okay? And that's, that's what, you know, citizens should be looking for. How did it happen? How do we prevent it from happening again? We're not talking about a tremendous amount of money here, but it's simply a, a, a point that this is how you prevent such things from happening in the future. It's not a blame game. It's how did this happen? You were moving. It's easy for things to get lost when you're moving, and people move around all the time. Uh, but, you know, so the state, maybe, maybe they misaddressed it. I've been getting things, instead of one oh one Penn Avenue, I've been getting documents from the state saying ten Penn Avenue. And they have the correct address, it's just that somebody just poked it in the computer wrong, okay? And you have to be sensitive to those kind of things. So you do what is reasonable, and that's what we call internal controls. That's what you look at in every audit, okay? Are your internal controls working? Are they sufficient? Do they need to be updated, okay? Did someone ignore them? And sometimes it happens. You drop the ball. Uh, or maybe you have to create new ones, but, you know, I'm glad that, you know, the situation's been resolved, and it should not happen again. Um, let's see. I read an interesting article in the paper this week about, um, the difference between using rock salt and, which is calc, calc, um, uh, or sodium chloride, and calcium chloride, which is somewhat more expensive in terms of de-icing sidewalks and roads and bridges and that kind of thing. Uh, and, and the question came up in my mind, yes, it is more expensive to buy calcium chloride instead of rock salt, but what the intense scrutiny coming into things like stormwater management, and the pollution of rivers and streams and lakes and ponds and everything else, is it possible, if the county were to have some kind of countywide purchase of calcium chloride instead of rock salt, that there might be an economy of scale in purchasing it for the entire county, that it would serve two purposes? You would be able to purchase it without, you know, great financial hardship to the county, and by the same token, reduce the effects of pollution in our water systems? Has anyone ever thought about that? I know we don't have countywide stormwater management, but I'm just wondering, you know, could there be, uh, an economy of scale, instead of buying rock salt, which kills bridges, kills roads, kills, kills cars, okay, and to go for the more expensive but less harmful calcium chloride, uh, which may be, you know, maybe an individual municipality doesn't want to buy it because they can't budget for it? Just something you may want to consider, kind of, because I don't know the dollar figures, and I don't know how much money could be saved or not. But, you know, then you have to calculate, well, how much money are we paying in replacing bridges and roads and everything else? Because rock salt is doing such devastation to our infrastructure. So, just, just something I would suggest. Uh, let's see, what else? Mind everybody that tonight, uh, six to eight PM, or six-thirty to eight PM, doors open at six PM at Lackawanna College. Auditor General De Pasquale's going to have a town hall meeting about the Scranton School District. And I know it's only the Scranton School District, but that's a significant, significant portion of the county's population, and they are in deep trouble. So any, anybody, any resident, any taxpayer, has recommendations about how to improve the system there, both financially and educationally, because remember, the Scranton School District comes in at the bottom in terms of chaining various educational goals. ought to think about going to the, I sent you an email, I don't know if you got it, Lorraine, that it's tonight.
You know, I don't check my, I don't do emails, but I'll, if you tell me, you've sent me one, I'll look, but-
It's tonight at Lackawanna College. The doors open at six PM-
She'll get it for me.
And it'll be from six-thirty to eight. It's a town hall meeting on the Scranton School District.
Well, with everything that goes on in the community, I just don't feel safe doing emails, so.
And last but not least, the last year or two has been, in many ways, what the, the we used to call the, I, I know, horribilis, the horrible year, horrible two years, with, you know, one incident after another, and all kinds of bad things, the diocese, the city, the school district, you know, which one's going belly up first, who knows? So maybe you want to get out of town for one day. So the Friends of the Scranton Public Library, as one of our fundraisers, we're sponsoring a bus trip to Yale University, okay? Saturday, May fourth, and we're going to, you know, Yale's over three hundred years old. And we're going to tour the campus, we're going to go to the Bynicki Library, their public art gallery. Uh, you get to see a lot of rare books, including a Gutenberg Bible, all kinds of wonderful things. The cost, if you're a member of the Friends of the Scranton Public Library, is fifty dollars, and if you're not, it's fifty-five dollars.
See, I wasn't including it, why?
It's a bus trip, it'll leave from the public library and come back that evening. So you ought to get out of town, enjoy yourself for one day, and do something that has no headaches involved. A bus trip for over fifty or fifty-five dollars, okay? And for the general public, if you're interested, call Jill at five seven zero nine four seven six five seven one, or call Gail at five seven zero six five zero seven two eight three. Deadlines to register is April eighth, but it'd be a nice chance to get out of town for one day and enjoy something which just is totally wonderful and entertaining and educational. Go to Yale University. Maybe you have children or grandchildren, and they're thinking about college? Take them along, let them see the campus, let them talk to people up there. Uh, we have a lot of, you know, residents who have students up there. A couple people were mentioned to us at our last meeting that checked with them, that are actually students up at Yale, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay, Commissioners of the Business?
No.
No, no.
No, 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 no.
Oh, oh, oh geez, sorry.
Just quickly. Hi, my name is Martina Soden, I'm head of reference at the Scranton Public Library, and I just wanted to just say that it's been a pleasure working, I've, I've been only at the library for the last ten years, and many employees have been there longer, but it's been a pleasure working under Jack Finnerty during my time there and learning from him. So I really, really appreciate all I've learned in my ten years that I've been there under Jack.
Fifty-six years.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Exactly, exactly. It's been a pleasure. Um, and the only other thing I'm going to talk about just quickly is just let everybody know, because it's tax season, that residents of Lackawanna County, please check to your local libraries. Most of us have gotten our, our tax forms, so people can come in, get their income tax forms. We do have them on hand, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioners of the Business?
Um, that Gutenberg Bible, I wonder, is that, is that with the Apotheca in it, do you know? Is that with the Apotheca, is that like a, a Catholic Bible, or just?
Well, the Gutenberg Bible was the first printed book in fourteen fifty-three, and it launched, uh, the, uh, actually, you know-
So it was the Protestant Bible, okay.
Renaissance.
I got to go see that.
First printed book.
Okay, thanks, Joan. Um, in talking about what, we talked in regards to Lackawanna County, um, you know, I'm always trying to talk about how all the, and I know Commissioner O'Malley's always talking about the good works that happen here in Lackawanna County, but what I like to also talk about is the fact that you have three commissioners here that are consistently trying to do what is right, and, um, you know, somehow we get lumped into, um, articles that include us with other government agencies that aren't doing what they should do. And that's kind of why I went off. It had nothing to do with Joan, I was just reminded of something I saw on television and was upset about, because we don't belong there. That that's not out, we might be located in Scranton, but we are not just representatives of Scranton, we are representatives of the entire county. The work that we're doing here is much different, and our prison board, we'll have a prison board meeting after this, our prison board is made up of more people than just three county commissioners. We have a DA that sits on it, we have the sheriff, we have the judges, we have, uh, you know, different entities, Labor Council, that sit on the board for the prison board. It's not just us three, okay? So, um, but all of us as, including the board, has worked on numerous changes at the prison when we first got into office, that we've been looking at, including cost analysis, which is my big thing on finances, that have saved us money, and that have done a good job. Now, you cannot ever dictate who, what employee you have is going to run off the rails. I mean, what, we just had two Loseran County police officers that were arrested, I saw on the news, for, you know, basically assaulting people that were arrested and, for sexual favors, to let them go. Is that indicative of the entire police force of Loseran County? No, of course not. But somehow, when one employee gets blamed for something, somehow, it's the entire county is at fault. And I just resent that. I just, I, I'm going to say it, I resent that, because I think, I think we've done what we can to make sure that the prison is being run smoothly, and, you know, I, I think it's as best we can. I mean, it is a building filled with criminals, let's not forget, okay? So how much can you control in that type of environment, um, you know, while we've, you know, any for any prison? And I'm sure there's problems in every single prison. We, we aren't select in the issues that occur. And it doesn't just happen in prisons, as we found out, uh, from, you know, police officers that had been involved in something, accused of something similar to what some are accused of in ours. But anyway, um, you know, it's, it's just, uh, I don't believe we should be lumped into a whole trifecta, as, as it was listed, and, um, we are our own separate government entity, and, um, we are not under criminal investigation. So let's just clear that up right away. As for, um, the issue I had with the regionalization of environmental issues, I just have to say to the community, you know, just make sure that you're aware of who you elect locally, because they're making the decisions for this. Your local councils are the ones that are having these meetings and, and making decisions based on your behalf of what you want used in your community. So when, when you get an ordinance one day that says, you know, whatever, whatever the order, and, and this has nothing, I'm just going to throw it out there, like, everybody complains about the three-inch grass, you know, we're going to get fined. You know, these are things that are done at your local level and now are becoming regionalized, so just pay attention. And, and I would, you know, um, suggest that everybody look at what's happening at the, the local level in regards to regionalization, because it apparently is a big push for that to happen, and, um, you know, whenever I hear, you know, tools in the toolbox, it makes me nervous, because I think, oh, government's coming and they have the answer, and they don't have any answers, they just want to get involved in your life where they don't belong. So, um, that makes me a little bit worried. And then when I hear them basically use a statement, a blanket statement, that, um, you know, the state says, the state law says, that all communities must provide, it's in the law. Well, really, because it hasn't affected all these towns for all these years, but all of a sudden, we figured it's in the law, we found it in the law. Then after you question it more, you find out, no, it is not that, they're talking about exclusionary areas that you can be possibly sued for. And, you know, we've seen some of that kind of stuff happen in our areas with, you know, gas companies, landfills, we've seen it around our area. So it can be an issue at times, but your zoning board does have the ability to fight that. Again, based on who you elect as your council, which brings us right back to what Joan said, is that, you know, more people should be involved in their community and listen and attend the meetings and vote, based on, you know, just don't go out there and vote because Uncle Jay is running, you know? Look at what they support, look at what they're going to, uh, vote on for your community, because it affects, it does affect your life. Every office affects your personal life, every one of them. And, um, it's extremely important that you understand the issues and not just vote willy-nilly on, you know, who's, who's running for office. And, uh, I just want to make sure, I'm not forgetting. We had a, a press conference yesterday in regards to, um, you know, helping out some of the people that aren't, their, their paychecks may be withheld because of federal dollars, because, you know, we now have a split and divided government, which the people voted for, and this is the result. So, um, what we had decided is going to help out, um, our employees, and, and the whole point of that is, and, um, I commend my two fellow commissioners, also previous administrations, for the work they've done to look out for, um, the financial interests of the county, because now we're able to continue and, you know, make sure that the employees are, you know, getting paid, because we have a surplus that we can utilize. And this board did not kowtow to the pressure that would have come with a reassessment. We save that surplus for a reason, it's there for, these type of specific issues that are, are something that I think are critical and important to be able to fund for our employees, so that, you know, we don't see them, you know, struggling to pay their mortgages or pay for food, or mortgage, or any, any items that they need for the necessities of life. And, um, you know, I appreciate the fact that we've been able to do that, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of that, Commissioner, both Commissioner O'Terriani and O'Malley, because previous administrations, I know you were a part of, and, um, you know, I appreciate the work that you all did on that, so thank you. And, uh, that's all I have today.
Christian O'Terriani.
I'm good.
Okay. Um, just like to remind everyone that there is sleigh riding back at McDade Park, and hopefully there'll be snow on the hill after the rainstorm today, so that's free for the community. And I also would like to, uh, um, say that the county is, thank God, we're, in a way, there's a lot of work that was put into it, but financially, we're in a good situation where, three years ago, or two years ago, we were able to make sure when the, uh, budget was at a standstill in Harrisburg, that we were able to take care of our Children and Youth Services, area aging, all of our human service departments, and make sure that they got a paycheck every two weeks for, I think it was three to four months. We were able to take care of it then, and we're able to take care of it now with our county housing authority and COLTS. Like, where would we be if the county housing, if someone's not there to fix a pipe or clean the sidewalks, and where are the residents going to be? Um, our transportation, where are we going to be if someone needs to get ready to work or to their appointments, or whatever you may be? And that would be our blue buses that actually go around Corning Transport, to take people to their necessary appointments. We're making sure through county government that we're able to fund those departments that mean so much to the citizens of Lackawanna County. And to some citizens, those departments are the difference between life and death. So, thank God, we're able to, be able to provide for that, and, um, we're here to make sure that our citizens, I mean, our employees, however, of these authorities, like, aren't going to be hit with the harsh situation of losing their credit scores, losing their houses, not being able to pay their utilities or feed their families, so I think I'm very happy that Lackawanna County is there, and, um, I think our government does a great job. And, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
Real call.
Commissioner, one second before you- Commissioner, one second before you adjourn.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
The next meeting, we were going to move the next meeting...
Okay.
To January, to February the fourth, because the sixth is...
Yes, um, there's going to be, there's a little situation where one of our commissioners has something going on, on February sixth, so we're going to be having the meeting on February fourth?
Fourth, at ten AM.
February fourth, at ten AM.
That's the Monday.
It's a Monday.
Thank you.
So, just a little, it's a little bit of a change, maybe sometimes we have things that we got, you know, that we have to go and do, so we try to accommodate all of our commissioners on the board, if need be, and it's very, very rare that we do this, so. So it'll be a Monday meeting, ten AM, so, please, come on out.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.